I wanted to get you, I said, you're in for ten, you know. So, he said, okay, and then he went out and got about eight of his scholarships. So, he's in for two. And then mom was like, we can't swim eighteen or through seventeen more.
Really makes sense to go to, otherwise it's gonna be a nervous trip on vacation.
Right. And he's real conscious about that. That's why he was so hard on his grades, because he wanted to use his scholarships, which are renewable, if he made the service. He does. Now, the problem is that his scholarships aren't here for four years. So, in any way, we're just really trying to get out of the pool, right?
Um, I mean, we'll, we'll just, we'll, I think we'll just do a, you know, put it right, because he designed it since he was a student, so we'll just do it.
Because I canceled the meeting that I had at twelve o'clock when I got there, I was like, uh.
Okay, give it, give it to her and, um, say she's our money person, so she can get into it.
So, you'll be using this, okay?
Yes.
And, because your voice is pretty soft.
Yes.
And it's harder to hear sometimes.
I'll get, I'll, I'll.
You're a good man.
Charlie Brown.
He is. So, you guys will share this.
Yep.
Yeah, man. Okay.
Now, where's the?
Now, I'm going to give you the same thing.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, you're on it, baby. These are the hot seats. Smile.
A lot of smiles.
It's here.
She runs up to you all the time.
I'm on, I'm always in this.
You know, you know how people are.
Okay.
Hmm. That's why I've stopped. I won't, I won't eat fence or anything anymore, because when you watch it, because I watch it to make sure the streams are in it, like, I look so weird, because I'm live. It's such terrible.
I told her, I told her, what, would you want to be a chief? You want to be a chief? You gotta stay with all day, you don't need to be a chief.
You know how seriously we take, um, your time and everyone's time. We will now call the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors on December twentieth, twenty seventeen, is now called to order. The Secretary, please call a roll.
Ms. Manser.
Here.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Here.
Ms. Lewis. Mr. Oats.
Here.
Mr. Fiero.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Morris.
Here.
Dr. Hartsfield.
Here.
And Ms. Robinson.
Here. If there's not an objection, I would like to excuse the absence of Natalie Lewis tonight. Seeing no objections, her absence is excused. If there isn't any objection, we would like to approve the agenda. If not, the agenda is approved. We have six persons that wish to address the board this evening. Our public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. And we now would like to recognize Mark Rossin to talk about a special presentation to KCPS from Train. Welcome, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. I want to recognize, that is actually Mark Rossin, but he asked me to do this tonight, so, um, he's my colleague, and I also have Angie Gensler in the audience. We're all with the Train company. And, um, we're very pleased to be here tonight, because we're going to present a check from the Train company to the school district for over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So, that's always fun to do that. Let me, uh, give you a little background on how this is possible. So, back in tw- the year twenty fourteen, um, myself and a team of folks from, from the company we represent, worked with the administration and staff to come up with ideas and strategies to become more efficient. And we focused our efforts on energy efficiency in the, in the school buildings. So, we came up with a, a number of ideas, literally hundreds of things to consider, uh, and really some generalized things, uh, for, uh, as far as time here. We looked at upgrading your district's, uh, energy efficiency for their, uh, lighting projects, and updating your heating and ventilation, air conditioning systems, some of which were over thirty-plus years old. And, uh, we looked at, uh, water conservation measures, and direct digital controls, which is a technology that is used to, uh, increase the comfort in your classrooms, and also shut things back when the buildings aren't occupied, and turn things back on when they are. So, that all went on, and during the, uh, the fall of twenty fourteen, then in the, uh, spring of twenty fifteen, the Board of Education approved a contract with Train to become the designer and the builder of these energy efficiency, uh, projects. Not all of them were implemented, but many were. We looked with local contractors to, that's what actually Mark did, he was a project manager, and worked with local contractors and local community members to manage that process. And then we just finished up in the, in June of twenty seventeen, so roughly a two-year initiative. And after the project was completed, um, in September, tr- I'm gonna make sure I get this right, Train filed for the approval of a, of a federal program called one seventy-nine D, Commercial Buildings Energy Efficiency Tax Deduction. So, what is that? That is a, a program offered by the federal government to incentivize designers and building owners to become more energy efficient. So, we just did that with, with, uh, here at the Kansas City Public Schools, and we were awarded a tax deduction, because we're a, a, a private instit- a private entity that pays taxes, we were able to lower our taxes. And that is where a percentage, we're sharing that with the school district, and that's why we're able to offer this tonight. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Um, if we could get a picture, and I'm going to ask, we have shared leadership here at KCPS, I'm gonna ask my, uh, colleague, Matthew Oats, to take the picture on behalf of the board.
Let's have you guys, let's have you guys scoot over to your right a little bit, there you go, perfect. Okay, hang on, and one more. Okay, go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. We next would like to invite Elijah Verge Junior to come discuss violation of Board Policy four point one. Welcome, Mr. Verge, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Bedell, Madam Chair, esteemed board members, my name is Elijah Verge Junior. I'm a father of a senior at Central Academy of Excellence. And I came before this board in March of two thousand seventeen, because I just had a feeling inside of me that me and my student athletes were going to be passed over somehow this year. We had some incidents with coaches, hazing, harassing, bullying my son, so I came forward to let everybody know that. Well, we had an incident this year at Central, where my senior son, who participated in winter sports for three years, freshman, sophomore, junior year, he was cut from the team as a senior. Now, I do understand we got a new coach, and I understand chemistry, but I really don't believe if the three coaches prior hadn't been released, Avery wouldn't have got cut. The way it happened, if the coach didn't want Avery, all he had to do was communicate that to us, we're going in a different direction. But to can put him down by making him come out and try out in front of his peers, and then to cut him as a senior, that just perpetuated the cycle of put downs, you know, humiliating him. And I'm just tired of it. You know, we do the best we can to advocate for him, we try to teach him to be respectful to adults, and just do the best you can. And that's what he's done. I, I really appreciate his resolve in spite of the situation, where if it's a student-to-student situation, I don't get involved. But when coaches weigh in, and they're continuing to put him down in front of his teammates, single him out, target him, then daddy has to step forward. It's with a heavy heart today that I look at my son, and he's done a great job representing himself, his school, he's shown great sportsmanship, but there's times where communication between the coach and him is sometimes forgotten, and then he, then he, then when he reminds them, oh, it, he's being selfish, it's not about the team, but this is what you told him. So, based on four point one, to discriminate, retaliate against the KCPS family for any non-disruptive expression or dissent or concern. The coaches that treated Avery equally from two thousand sixteen, seventeen were unsupported, considered not team players, and released by Mr. Madry. I would have taken this to the SAC, but our SAC is dysfunctional. We tried to, I tried to serve as a SAC officer, tried to bring some order to the SAC, but I was just led, messed, met with intimidation and confusion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Verge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Valerie Tucker from Success Academy at Knott's. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Valerie Tucker, and I'd like to speak to you this evening briefly on behalf of Success Academy at Knott's, uh, as a professional, as a concerned citizen, as, and as a concerned grandparent. Uh, I did reach out to, uh, Dr. Bedell, I haven't heard back from you, I'm sure that I will. Uh, but my aim is threefold. Initially, I wish to publicly share my appreciation for the exemplary work performed through Success Academy at Knott's under the leadership of Mrs. Linda May. In view of the fact that Mrs. Lay was abruptly removed, Mrs. Glenn is now at the helm and doing a wonderful job. I visit the site often and recognize the growth of a population of students who have been traumatized and tossed aside. I witness a seat of mostly African-American males who have been historically been marginalized and underserved, being treated as people now with full rights and privileges. My first thrilling experience at Success Academy was to share the joy of so many children receiving awards last spring for both academic and social growth. Knott's has been able to see past the behaviors and create a responsive, trauma-informed environment for the children they serve. On a personal note, my own grandson is now thriving and performing at grade level because of the love, caring, and due diligence shown by the faculty and leadership of Success Academy. He was not sent to a Success Academy by his former school. We removed him from a signature school where his needs were not being met, and purposefully sent him to Success Academy under the care and guidance of Linda May. Secondly, in my opinion, as a citizen and professional, the abrupt removal of Mrs. May from Success Academy had a substantial and adverse impact on the students, staff, and the community. Less than a year ago, Linda May was recognized as Principal of the Year, and as of mid-October of this year, she was abruptly removed from Success Academy in a disrespectful and thoughtless manner. I question the wisdom of treating an employee with nearly forty years of dedicated service in the same action used as we would with a criminal. Moreover, the children, faculty, staff, and community are not considered in a, were not considered in a thoughtful and appropriate manner. This is even more important, because the population of children we serve through Success Academy at Knott's have already experienced deep trauma and successive failures. And finally, I ask the administration to please consider or reconsider its decision to remove Mrs. May, and think of the destructive impact this abrupt action has had upon the constituents.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Of Success Academy.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Next, Tom Love to discuss math labs in elementary schools. Welcome, Mr. Love. I should say, welcome back, Mr. Love. You have three minutes.
Well, I'd like to begin by wishing all of you a very Merry Christmas. And I want to thank, uh, Dr. Bedell for answering my, uh, Christmas request last year, which was to get some K through second grade reading help. Uh, appreciate the grant work that's going on on that. Uh, I'd like to, uh, add a, a suggestion that because we have Title I funds specifically for that purpose, and I think it, I think it amounts to between five and six hundred dollars per student, um, from what I've read, uh, depending on the percentages of students in the, in a school, it could go as high as six hundred dollars. Uh, I think we have the funds for that, but if we're short and we have a, a small school population, I think we probably ask for a grant to supplement and get all that taken care of. Also, that's for K through second. I mean, if we have sixty students in kindergarten, first, and second, hundred and eighty students times six hundred dollars is like, hundred and eight thousand dollars. So, we have the funds to provide the, uh, with, with grants if needed for every elementary school that's Title I. And I believe we also would have the funds to provide math labs for third through sixth. I'd like to see the students succeed at a high level. When I look at Lincoln, and you look at for, the requirements to enter Lincoln is, is basically to read and do math on grade level, well, I think ninety-five percent, maybe ninety-seven percent of students are capable of doing that. And that's, that's kind of what makes this a tragedy, we haven't been utilizing our Title I's funds correctly, and unfortunately, the state and federal government hasn't really been watching. I, I went to Washington DC last, uh, October, a year ago October, and, and, um, I was shocked that they didn't have someone for that position, although they said they were looking into it the previous year, billions of dollars, and no one's watching. But anyway, I want to put in a request that we, that we target those funds and look at the academic needs of the students, and because the children here, uh, were tested, and they're just as smart as any kids anywhere in the world, they identified a percentage of students that were advanced out of this district, and it's the same. So, there's no reason why the, if they're given the correct help, they also have to be the correct developmental age to start and be successful. So, we, we were, uh, putting seven-year-olds in third grade a few years ago, which is like, you don't have to start first grade until you're seven in this state, you can start at six, but you're not required to start till you're seven. But we could, we could make sure that every child completes first grade, and is successful, and with the correct literacy help, uh, and, and then targeting the students that are not quite ready to go, we can get everybody ready to go and, and, uh, and have success from the beginning. Currently, the state of Missouri says, well, you have to fail four years before they intervene. You have to fail kindergarten, first, second, third grade, and then they're required to help at fourth grade.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Our last speaker for the evening is Ayanna Bridges to discuss Success Academy at Knott's. Welcome, Mrs. Bridges, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Ayanna Bridges. I'm a graduate of this district, a college professor, and a mom of a seven-year-old son who's in the second grade at Knott's. My goal is to persuade the board to reinstate Linda May at Knott's. There are two overarching problems I'd like to address. My son started at a signature school, he had a strong start. By the end, he was traumatized by the time he left. His first-grade teacher allowed him to sleep in class, she publicly labeled him a bad boy, humiliated him in front of his peers, contacted my son's doctor to have his meds increased, refused to adhere to his IEP, requested that he have a personal aide, and she never was reprimanded by the principal, and the principal called me constantly whenever my son acted out. When he left, he experienced weight loss, he wasn't eating, had a nervous tic, insomnia, I had to hire a tutor this summer to compensate for his lack of reading skills. Then I removed my son from the signature school and made a conscious decision to send him to Knott's. My son met Linda May, his life was changed in a positive manner. After my son had a successful several months with Lon- with Knott's, Linda May was ripped away without so much as a chance to say goodbye, there wasn't an assembly, a letter, a flyer, nothing, it was handled poorly. Linda May is a pillar of this community, she was awarded Principal of the Year, yet this administration threw her away like my son was thrown away from his signature school. Therefore, not only should Linda May be reinstated, reinstated at Knott's, she should be publicly acknowledged for her hard work, and furthermore, other schools should take notice of what they're doing at this Success Academy. They greet the children, they treat them as a whole person, they expect proper attire, posture, they respect the students, and they have an amazing staff. My student isn't considered bad at Knott's. I don't receive a bunch of phone calls in a day, they focus on the positive, and they actually help with social skills and catch him being good. Linda May even held an award ceremony for the children. So, I want you to imagine this, we're looking at, uh, spring break twenty seventeen, we're still at the signature school. I tell my son that Sunday to get ready for school the next day, my son goes to pack a bag, because he would rather run away from home and have to go back to his school. Now, I want you to imagine this, for many of the Knott's students, this is their last chance, many don't go there, they're sent there, and up to this point, they're labeled bad, incorrigible, unteachable, and they're thrown away. How is it that his former first-grade teacher still draws a paycheck, but Linda May is exiled from Knott's? Linda May reminds these beautiful young people that they matter, and that they have a future. A majority of the students at Knott's are black males, and it is no secret that if you're born a black male in the United States, you have a target on your back, let's change that narrative, let's start making the right decisions and reinstate Linda May. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to thank, um, our six speakers today for your public comments and engagement in KCPS. For the presentation of this evening's revenue and expenditure report, the Chair recognizes our Board Treasurer, Matthew Oats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is our monthly, uh, financial report, and that's how, this is as of the end of November, um, so going to our, um, standard chart with revenues over expenditures, again, revenues at the top, expenditures are at the bottom. Right now, we have a current total revenue through, um, through the end of the November of almost twenty-one million dollars, that's compared to about twenty-six and a half million dollars last year. Uh, we can take a look at two specific areas to get an idea of that, of that, uh, difference. Number one, if we look at our local, uh, last year, or this year, we're currently at seven and a half million versus, uh, ten and a half million last year, and that's primarily due to the sale of the Westport Building. Um, when we look at our federal, when we look at our federal, uh, money, uh, to date, revenue to date, uh, this year versus last year, uh, we find ourselves at eight point eight million dollars this year versus, uh, ten and a half million last year, and that's mainly due to a variance in, uh, um, a Title I, uh, funds and disbursement, so we expect to see that get a little bit closer when that happens. Looking at our bottom part, the expenditures, so, um, as of this year, we are at, um, seventy-three point two-six million this year versus seventy-one and a half million dollars last year. So, that represents about a roughly, uh, one and a, one point eight million dollar difference. And a lot of that is due to increased funding in our professional development and curriculum development for this year, and also, uh, the purchase of technology, um, for this year. Uh, and so that, that's a lot of what we see. Um, if we looked at our revenue over expenditure, so again, taking our, um, excuse me, taking our, uh, revenue, um, subtracting our expenditures, we're currently at, um, fifty-two million under for the year. And that's primarily why, um, again, um, we like to keep a good, healthy fund balance, um, because if we didn't have that, it'd be really tough to keep the lights on in the building. Um, so, looking at our next page, uh, where the money goes, so it's always, um, really important that, uh, we note that, um, seventy-five percent, or seventy-eight percent of our funds that are local, uh, we're now looking at where the money goes, um, again, obstruction, both direct classroom and auxiliary help come in at about fifty-five percent of our budget. So, looking at our, uh, fiscal year thus far, um, as you see here, our, our two charts are about the same, um, our revenue is, is, our revenue is trending about the same, are, as well as our, uh, expenditures. So, over the next couple of months, December and January is when we'll start to see, um, uh, our local revenue streams, uh, begin to come in, and so we'll start to see this blue line creep up and eventually pass the, uh, red line, so back into the positive. Um, I'll open it up for any questions right now.
Yes, Board Member Manser.
So, we know that the state of Missouri is not met its obligations to this point on, on, um, support for bus transportation, this has been an issue being discussed around the state. Um, should, should we, I guess this budget was developed earlier, and so we projected for that shortfall of state funding, is my question?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
And do, when do we have a sense of would, um, when that bus funding, the state re- revenue might come up for renewal?
We don't have a sense that it's gonna come up for a renewal, we're working on our Amendment One to this budget, which we'll present to the board in February. We get about sixteen percent reimbursement, we always have, for transportation. So, we cover transportation out of our operating budget.
But there was a short, there was a cut in, in transportation dollars from the state?
Yes.
And Ms. Manser, that is one of the, um, areas that the cooperating school districts is advocating for on their legislative agenda, uh, very similar to what we are also advocating for, uh, in Jefferson City.
Thank you, Mr. Oats. Are there any ad hoc committees that wish to report this evening? I do want to take the opportunity to recognize John Fiero, his leadership, and the, his full Committee on the Government Relations Committee for having a successful stakeholders' engagement breakfast. Um, and as we talk about our state, federal legislative priorities, it takes, um, all of Kansas City, our friends, to help us push those things through, so we appreciate your leadership and the leadership of the committee, um, on your efforts. For item two point zero four, the next item of business is the report of the Superintendent, the Chair recognizes, our Superintendent, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During our business meetings, we like to highlight, do a KCPS video highlight, and this month, that focus will be on staff engagement. this month, that focus will be on staff engagement.
Team KCPS is stronger than ever, thanks to recent events designed to engage employees, increase cohesion, and make us more effective as collaborators. Superintendent Mark Bedell hosted a town hall forum with faculty and support staff on Wednesday afternoon, November 29, in the East High School Auditorium. This was an open discussion where teachers and staff were encouraged to ask Dr. Bedell pertinent questions and offer suggestions. A live stream from the forum was broadcast online, and team members were able to send their questions remotely. Dr. Bedell regularly hosts forums with staff and students in order to proactively promote dialogue, identify challenges, and develop solutions. Team KCPS got its game on during our debut intramurals day on Saturday, December 2, at Central Academy of Excellence. This day featured three-on-three basketball and four-on-four volleyball matches with teams comprised of employees from different schools and departments, including Dr. Bedell. There were also card games, dominoes, and table games. Team KCPS Intramurals Day was intended to build staff unity and promote spirit across the school system. This day of fun and games was open to all KCPS employees and their families. It included free food and prizes, plus t-shirts for the first 250 attendees. Employee engagement is a critical component of our long-term success as a school system. Priority seven of Pillar C in our strategic plan is focused on attracting, developing, and retaining a diverse, effective workforce at all levels of KCPS. Dr. Bedell's Town Hall Forum and the Team KCPS Intramurals Day were two big steps towards
Any other presentations, that conclusion?
Yeah, we have superintendent, but that's another item.
Okay. All right. At this time, item 2.5, the chair calls on Dr. Bedell to give a special recognition.
Okay, so we do have a special guest here today that we invited. Last year was the first time that the school district conducted a Teacher of the Year banquet, at least in recent years, from what we learned. And so, Derek Wiggins was selected as that individual to represent our school district in the statewide competition. And so, Derek, we did not have an opportunity to present you with your ring. It is now ready and provided to you from Jostens. So, we wanted to do that here publicly in front of our community and the board, so if you would come up, we want to give you your ring.
He's like, I'm not taking it off my finger. Again, congratulations.
Yeah, I just want to say this too about Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins been with us, what, are you in your sixth year now or fifth? He's in his fifth year. It was one of the schools that I had an opportunity to visit when I started here, and was just phenomenal to observe him working with his kids over at Carver. And when I found out that he was one of the finalists, I said, oh, I remember that guy. I didn't know your name or anything, but to see the talent that you bring and the care and compassion that you bring to this profession, you are a model, and we most certainly hope to continue to support you and your evolution as a teacher, supporting our kids here in the school district.
Mr. Evans?
Dr. Bedell, I'm assuming that this will be an annual, what do you call it, recognition?
Yes, it will, and we've already have received funding for this year's event to support the purchase of, because we actually awarded Mr. Wiggins with the Nice Cash Award, and that was because of funders who really do believe in this type of recognition. And so, funders have already stepped up for the 2017-2018 Teacher of the Year banquet.
Will that be an archival room or place where pictures can be displayed of the winners?
Yes, and I believe, I know we have a plaque that each year, the new names will be added to that plaque.
Item 3.01, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Yeah, Madam Chair, at this time, what we're asking the board is that we postpone the board taking action on this. Recently, the administration received some additional information that we want to investigate further. We just want to make sure that we're making sound decisions with anything, any purchases of this type of magnitude. So, we are asking to postpone this item and then bring it back to the board when we have our next board workshop.
Is there any objection to refer this item back to the superintendent? Seeing none, the item is referred back to the superintendent. Item 3.02, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we are asking the board to approve and take action on the fund balance designation for real estate in the amount of $1,530,000. This pertains to our discussions that we've had in closed session regarding the purchase of property.
Are there any questions for clarification? If not, it would now be in order to have a motion to approve this proposal?
It's on move.
It is moved and seconded to approve the budget and to designate and transfer $1,530,000 of operating capital projects fund balance to establish funds for the purchase of real estate property, including the cost of due diligence. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there's a majority in favor, and the budget and transfer of funds is approved. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve items 4.01, 018-S, 012, 051 through consent agenda item 4.08, 018-SEC, 012, 007.
Is there a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. This will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will say yes, those opposed will respond no. Will the secretary call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there's a majority in favor, and the items on the consent agenda are approved. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening, but we do want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Dr. Bedell, are there any comments before we close out this year?
Yeah, absolutely. We, as an administration, want to thank all of you for working with us, holding us accountable, supporting us in the work that we need to do to try to advance this school system. It's been a pleasure in the year and a half that I've now served as superintendent, working with you all, and honestly, just bringing the color back and taking and doing the things we need to do to continue to move this school system. One of the things I do ask, and I shared this with our staff yesterday, was this is a time of the year where we do need to revive ourselves, we need to have an opportunity to make amends, understand that every year, we do experience losses. But most importantly, what I've shared with all of our staff yesterday was, let's do everything in our power to inspire before we expire. And what I mean by that is not just passing away, but when we expire and we move on to that next phase of our life and our professions, did we do the right thing? Did we inspire, and did we leave the place a better place than it was before we started? Friday, we will close our offices at noon. We, our staff, and all of our schools and all of our facilities will close at noon on Friday, and then we will come back and resume business on January 4. So, I want to wish all of you happy holidays, and most importantly, a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Very well said. If there is no objection, the meeting will be adjourned. The meeting is adjourned, and we welcome you to come back to closed session. Thank you, Board Members.